I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Legions.
Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Okay. Any subtractions from the consent agenda?
No, sir.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move, second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Eyes have it. Okay, first up we have a presentation from Noka County. Nick? Get out of here. Michael, I'm sorry.
May your members of council, we are here tonight to talk about Rockland. Looking at doing as a project in 2019. Currently there's no shoulders, we're all aware. What this project is going to do is going to add eight-foot shoulder to the entire length. Replace all the driveway culverts, fix the ends of the culverts. Fix any ditching issues to make sure that they're recoverable so the car won't go off. Standardize the city streets approaches as much as we can. So we were able to receive federal funding for this project, which covers 90% of the project. With that being said, we left ourselves a little bit of latitude in there in case we needed to make some changes as we go along. So our intention is to add right turn lanes, add left turn lanes as possible, bypass lanes, and then make foot shoulder on the entire process. And then with the shoulder, we will do a thin overlay to blend all the info through, even though the pavement's in good condition to get that final wear course on when we move. The shoulder's on, we're going to come back and extend overlay. Really, the reason we want to come to you tonight is we want to start reaching out to the property owners and letting them know about the project, have an open house. And we'd like you folks to know about this first, and then when you're, at least you have some background to make sure you can receive calls or inquiries. So the limits go on this project from Potomac to Kettle River. And we anticipate the budget is going to be about 1.1 billion total. Of 990,000 will be federal funds, 100,000 will be local, and over county funds. And we don't anticipate any cost share at this point from the city. Very good funding mechanism. It would've been nice to do the shoulders when we did the overlay. We just, we compete for these projects and we're fortunate to receive the funding now. So, much of the right-of-way out there is prescriptive and I don't know your knowledge on prescriptive. It pretty much means what's out there now is what you can use it for. If you have a lane, it has to be a lane.
Call it as traveled, but...
Yep, as traveled, yep. So, we're going to go out, we're going to buy the underlying easements. A lot of the right-of-way, a lot of property owners goes right to the center of the road. So we'll correct that and... We have about 43 homeowners that we'll be working with and I just create...
Okay.
Good.
Bill, you have a question, I know you do.
Well, I already talked about the turn lane up Potomac.
Okay, well, in Kettle River, is there going to be a bypass lane there?
What we're showing right now currently at Potomac and Broadway, there is currently a right turn lane and we would be able to have eight-foot shoulder. I'm going to take his comment back and take a look at. What we have to do, we have to widen it to a standard intersection, which we'd have to build a left turn, building left turn lanes, which is going to push those right lane limits out closer to the home.
That's what I would like to see personally.
We have to evaluate what we can do there because I do think people probably drive that right turn lane like a bypass lane.
They are, and they're ticketing for that right now, so...
So really what we want to do next, we'll go back, look at what that impact's going to be. We'll bring the layout that we have now is what we got our funding based on. We'll bring that to the open house, we want to show what we started with. And then through that public involvement process, we'll get, we'll gather information and bring those and then decide if we'll get that through.
So I question, you know, that if you're taking a right, going north on Potomac from east on west on Broadway?
Yep.
You would, it's a free right turn, I mean, you wouldn't, you'd slow down a little bit and turn. If you're going to go south, that's where you have to stop and wait for oncoming traffic. So we'd be better off with a center lane versus a right turn lane. You follow my logic there?
In that case, you'd probably want to build a pole so you'd have opposing, so you could actually make a left, people could make a right.
Yeah, I mean, that would be ideal, but...
If you put a bypass on the other side that we're going to go, you don't know if they're returning on Potomac or they're going to go through. So we'll have to run those. What we'll do is we'll get all the traffic count numbers and vehicles as well.
Okay.
See where the movements are, but this is very common when we hear it.
And I know Jeff is concerned about Notre Dame.
Notre Dame, I talked to him also before that.
You guys are supposed to wait for the meeting, dang it.
Well, he wanted to show us his...
And we are going to be live with our website tomorrow.
Oh, okay.
For every project we put the information on, but we didn't want this up and then you folks to get a bunch of phone calls and not know what we did here.
Okay.
So tomorrow, if you go to Noka County, just Google Noka County Highway Department, our future projects, this should be uploaded tomorrow sometime during the day. We'll put this general layout on there of what we've come up with. And obviously that's subject to change. I like to come in, you know, you always wait, you come in and it looks like it's done and people don't like that and you don't want, so you want to have enough information so people can comment on it because we like to have that involvement process, so...
So eventually there's going to be a meeting?
A public meeting, yeah.
Correct.
For those people that are involved or...
Yeah, we would do, what we would do in this case is... For rural areas, what we'll also do most likely is put some type of message boards if we can find them to say "public meeting, City Hall" or wherever we have it.
Mm-hmm.
So that way the drivers that use it may not have gotten the postcard, we'll also get that. We'll work with your city administrator to policy information and get it out as best we can. So it'll be, I'm guessing, early spring sometime. We want to have a little bit more, a little bit more detail on some of the projects that might be needed. Talk one on what we're talking about as well, too. We'll do a lot of kitchen meetings.
So that'll go right up to the roundabout, then?
Correct.
Okay.
So will you have the kitchen meeting to the fore or after the open house?
We'll offer it to them either way. A lot of times it's nice to get the one-on-ones for people that are directly affected. As soon as it's live, we're willing, our staff, myself and my regular staff and my executive staff are willing to go out and... So if you get phone calls, feel free to direct them towards us. We'll answer all the questions for you and you can leave on what we discussed, so...
So what about potential wetland issues? And don't take that the wrong way because you're going to fill them all as far as I'm concerned. But there's wetlands that are along there. How to, and, I mean, so they're going to, you guys are going to end up pushing the ditches back, right? Because the road will get wider, the ditches will go back. And then there's a couple places on Broadway where there's some wetland issues I know of.
Yep, so one of the nice things about projects like this is it's a safety area project. There's difference when you go from safety of the past, you want two lane, four lane, versus adding shoulders, right turn lanes, left turn lanes. Those are typically the wetlands, the whack-a-banks, the wetlands. They'll actually credit those, so any of the impacts we have will be mitigated through that state bank. So this is one of those type of projects. Typically things that aren't are going to be like trails, stuff like that. But what we're going to do is go out in the spring, we will hire a wetland consultant, we go out, do the, or do the determination of where the wetlands are and then we'll do our best to avoid all those and then mitigate what we can avoid.
Yeah, you, some of them, you're not going to get them wrong.
We're fully at this bay, that's all. Or through the watersheds and all those permits and all some. Construction year will be 2019.
Early or late?
Kind of depends on when the bid comes, what we can do. We'll look at the bidding environment and maybe we can get out ahead of time. There's going to be tree clearing, we'd like to get out a little early, so the window to clear trees has gotten very small. With oil and other threatened endangered species we have to work through. So I would anticipate we'd want to do an earlier project.
So is that shoulder going to accommodate then bike traffic and things like that, or...
It'll be an eight-foot shoulder, so it should accommodate bikes.
Okay. Got any other questions?
Well, the sad thing is it's going to be about the same time that everything else is going on. What a train wreck.
So this is under a safety grant from the Feds?
Yep, this is under the HSIP, Highway Improvement Safety Program, it's called. I believe it was the same funds we used for that type of project. So a lot of these are proactive, protective, getting out ahead before the crashes. It's our goal to put a turn lane everywhere we go to get the track. There's some cases where it's too close to a home or there's some other issue. We might have to shorten it up or minimize it or whatever. We're going to look at an eye towards the residents.
Are those safety improvement grants available to our, for us, for our city roads?
I believe they are, I don't know if Dennis would know that.
Clearly not for local roads in Moore County.
If the state's a state, if, yeah, if they're not a state, a city, they would not necessarily be... We do have some in our planning department that could have you, could have a job to do with it.
Yeah. Even the wetland credits would be nice to at least get some of that banking, so...
Maybe we should turn Hornsby over to the county and then they can get their wetland credits and get the...
There you go.
Or not Hornsby, Hour Lake Drive.
Like a quick claim deed, here you go. All right. Danny, any? Dennis, any questions on it?
Pretty straightforward, so we'll do, we'll do a good job with the public outreach for you and we'll make sure we get a successful project, so...
Okay, thanks for coming tonight. All right.
Do you have a card I can check on Kettle River with you?
I have your, I can get you his information.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, thanks for coming. All right, next up we have the planning commission report. We have the, we have the top dog from the planning commission here tonight.
Father Chair.
So last week's meeting, we had a third team of freeway district business owners, representatives of businesses. We had two people coming to the meeting, one from Westmore and one from Rice Creek. Give us some input on what they would like to see or not see.
And?
So the Westmore guy, somebody that I think he was trying to say that he'd like to see more similar same that he's, that wetland could expand in the future.
Oh, sure.
A little less community retail. Housing wise, they weren't voting for urban housing or urban-type housing. Most of their employees are looking for single-family homes.
So it looked like, and I missed that one meeting because of circumstances, but it looked like from Gander Mountain down or from whatever, it looked like most of those people wanted to see the commercial industrial zoning down there.
Yeah, I think that was the summary of the next part of the report, which was the... It was the same thing.
I'm not doing it. I don't know what's doing it.
Am I jumping the gun on you?
No, you go ahead.
That was one of the things I saw, so I was just asking.
Yeah, that's... The same results from the beaches we have with the landowners.
What about the northwest corner? Where did most of those people come in?
There wasn't many on that one.
Yeah, that was our...
That was my group. We only had two people at the table.
And they weren't even actually from the northwest, they were...
No, it was that area.
Yeah.
And they didn't want to see any, they really didn't want to see any change. They just want to keep their property until someone comes along and buys it. They don't want any housing in there, they just want commercial.
You know what, so the northwest corner doesn't want any housing, you mean?
They, well, that is their opinion, they consider two people, a husband and a wife.
Across, even across Broadway, like where the...
No one showed up for that side. They were, they were the ones by the cell tone, their cell tower.
Okay.
She wants to have, she wants, he's interested in...
Coffee shop.
Yeah, coffee shop.
Yeah.
And living there, residential and...
Sure.
Well, okay.
And then we had, you know, Aaron from the track. To summarize, I think he was saying that he'd like to see more entertainment-based businesses around the track. Housing wise, they were looking, you know, for urban housing for their workers and then, you know, jobs that people, free jobs that people would have disposable and come to spend on the track on their hands. That's pretty much summarizing that.
Okay.
And then from there, we went into, had a brief recap on our meetings, our other two meetings, meetings one and two. One being the results of our table meetings with the community landowners. And then the other one being the results of the diversified rural versus rural residential designation.
That leads us into the two-and-a-half, five-acre debacle, correct?
Yeah, right.
Okay. So, I think this, I know we could, Dean hopefully will be here at 8:00. So we could probably reserve that topic till then.
Yeah.
Probably save some duplication.
Because there's definitely some confusion.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I think, I mean, what I, from what I understood, when we started talking about this, we were just going to, we were seeking a designation. We weren't talking about any specific areas or if we were going to do it or not do it. The way, the way I understood, we could seek the designation and we'd have the ability to do it on our own. But we wouldn't have to do it. We could remain five acres and it just seemed like a win-win situation. It seemed like a proactive, responsible thing to do. Instead of waiting till the last minute and banging out that, hey, we should have probably put some two-and-a-half acre developments in here somewhere.
Well, yeah, we'll discuss that once Dean gets here, so we don't repeat ourselves, but was there anything else? Okay, so when Dean gets here, I'll call you back up.
What was you want me to say?
If you wouldn't mind. Aw, thanks. All right, moving on. Public open forum, anyone here for public open forum?
I have a question.
Come on up to the thing and give us your name and address.
I'm Janet, excuse me, Janet Haglund, 14025 Juliard Street. I know later in the agenda you're going to make an appointment to the EDA. I have a question about the EDA. Is that meeting open to the public? And it's always the second Wednesday at 6:00 o'clock here in this room? Or, that's what it said on your...
Yes, it's open to the public. It is four times a year.
Okay.
Which particular...
Quarterly.
Yeah, but which particular weekend or which particular Wednesday?
Oh, it's every Wednesday.
It slides around sometimes, doesn't it? Is it always the second Wednesday?
Of what?
Of the month, four times a year. So it'll be January plus three months.
So in December of each year, there's a publication of all the meetings for the planning commission. And on there is the EDA meetings, and it was quarterly. So I think it was January, April, July, and November, I think it was this year. April 11th, July 11th, I think, and November 7th.
Were you interested in getting on it?
No. It looks like you already have something that you need.
No, we need, we need more.
Yeah.
Well, we have two spots.
What's the process for nominating or...
So the process is you get an application, and then the mayor interviews you. And then from that point, I make a recommendation and then the council adopts you or ratifies you.
You appoint and they ratify.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, anyone else? Okay, moving on. We have information on the Rice Creek watershed plan update. What do you got there?
There's a letter here just informing you that they are doing a plan update and they're required to notify the local authorities of their plan update. So this is just for information purposes? Is it only, only one notice came?
Okay.
I'm not sure who's on Rice Creek, but it's a 10-year plan, it's kind of like our company. They do a water-based plan every 10 years.
We're busy work. Okay, Dennis?
Yeah, I had, back on the agenda, you already approved this, the County District 15 study that we're going to be doing.
Mm-hmm.
Basically modifications for Rice Creek's benefit. They prefer changing such things as words from comprehensive to regional for their own homoclature. And then we moved, the bottom line numbers stayed the same for the estimated fee, but we moved some costs from Phase 3 up to Phase 2 because the next item, which is an intergovernmental agreement, they're going to be proposing to fund 50% of the first phases. So we had a conversation, they agreed to move some of the costs up so that they would fund 50% of those. So just asking you to approve the council memo and fee structure again. None of the bottom number have changed, just again, some minor edits for Rice Creek's benefit.
Okay, someone want to make a motion to that effect?
So move.
Second.
Any other discussion?
Are we going to finance our 20,000, 25,000?
Elizabeth, do you know how we're going to be?
We were going to use part of the money from the rent that we got from Schaefer.
Okay.
And then ultimately that'll be built into the cost of the infrastructure.
Right. Okay, go ahead.
That leads to the next item.
Well, we got to vote on this one first, so...
Oh, sorry.
All right, any other questions? The rent was 50,000 or something?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five.
So we looked at this and we think this is needed down the southeast corner and...
It's going to be needed all along there.
And this is going to consolidate whatever we was looking for.
It's going to allow people to maximize the usage of their highland instead of creating their own, digging up their own highland and make ponds that'll allow them to have the pond down south where land's not as valuable.
That's the theory, isn't it?
That's the theory.
That's the theory. All right.
Okay, all in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Eyes have it.
So the next item is related to that and tonight I'd say it's just a draft, we're not looking for a motion. It's an intergovernmental agreement from Rice Creek where they are saying they're participating in the study and they'll fund up to 50% of those first two phases or up to about 19,000 of that study. So I'd say it's information for now. That they'll be bringing it back to the next meeting because they'll be signing it at their next meeting in March.
So we don't need to make a motion to approve it yet?
Correct.
That's not correct on the agenda, but that's fine. Anything else?
The last item was looking for a motion or I'm recommending that per information supplied from Priner's Preserve, they're looking for a third letter of credit reduction.
Okay.
So I'm recommending that agreeing with a $75,500 reduction.
Make a motion to approve the letter, letter of credit reduction request?
Second.
Okay, other discussions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed?
That's it.
Eyes have it.
Mayor, I have one other issue on the Priner Preserve. I did get a call from Byron Westland and...
It's not about snow plowing, is it?
It was not snow plowing.
Okay.
Several weeks ago, we approved preliminary plat 2. And we took three lots and then redo, and three lots into two lots is what the plat did. It replatted three lots into two. And his question to the city is whether or not he should get a refund of the Parkland dedication because the first plat, he paid X number of lots and now there's not that number of lots in the subdivision.
How many did he pay for?
I want to pay, I say he paid for 26 lots.
And how many is he going to end up with?
25 lots.
Well, he's good.
Or maybe it's 27 lots, whatever it is, it's one less lot.
He should get one credit then, don't you think?
As a result of plat 2.
Should he?
I don't, why not, I mean?
Well, it was their decision to divide it into two separate lots and we okayed that, so now we're going to refund more money.
It's $500, right?
Some dollars, $62.50.
Is it based on, like Dennis asked me, based on lots or area?
Based on number of lots.
Number of lots.
I've never heard of the practice, when you replat, you get refunds, so I'm unfamiliar with this. This is why I'm asking, it's a policy issue. We signed a developers' agreement for $25,250 was the number, that's what they paid. And now plat 2 was approved. There was not a developers' agreement for plat 2.
Mr. Mayor, you would not be legally required to refund it because there's no provision in the code or the development agreement that says you will. But there certainly is a basis with the reduction of one lot to make that refund.
Yeah, I don't, I think if they're only getting one less lot, I don't know why we would charge them for the lot they didn't get. I know they, it was on their behalf they changed it, but what if they went down to none? Would they get it all back? So, I mean, what do you guys think?
It's only a 700-some bucks, give it back to them.
Danny?
I have no, no, I don't care.
Either way.
I think we should give it back.
Someone make a motion one way or the other?
I'll make a motion to refund the difference for the three lots to two lots.
Second.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Eyes have it. Okay. Mr. Griffith?
Mr. Mayor and Council, in your additions on page A14 is a letter from the Department of Natural Resources indicating that they will be filing an appeal of the variances on Howard Lake Development for the sanctuary at Howard Lake PUD. They set forth their, the same things that they put in writing and, did they testify during the hearing?
They did.
They also testified during the hearing, I wasn't there, but... So the record contains similar objections. And they do note in the last paragraph that they're interested in working with the city to bring the development into conformance with state law to protect Howard Lake and other natural resources. Of course, the testimony that was provided at the hearing and by our experts is that the development would not have an impact on Howard Lake because of the large intermediate wetlands that intervene between. Also, we provided in the packets, the city's, city attorney's position that the DNR does not have a consent on these matters.
Okay.
I'm not sure how they'll make out this complaint, but we'll wait and see. This is something, as I informed Elizabeth, that would be handled by the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust, which provides defense for the city in its zoning actions.
Anybody here want to back down?
No.
Nope.
Okay, so it sounds like we're at a non-rite path.
So that's just information unless you wanted to change your position and it sounds like you do not.
Sounds like we're good.
Okay.
Keep it going, thanks.
All right.
Anything else?
The next item is the bytuminous roadways development agreement.
Okay.
There's a copy of that in your packet. I think the most significant thing, this is pretty standard, fair, but the most significant things I want to point out are that the document contains, an updated copy, the document contains both resolutions of approval, which have a number of findings of fact, as well as a number of conditions, both for the conditional use permit and the preliminary plat. Those are now incorporated into the agreement. There's some exhibits we're working on, including a detailed outline of the cost of utilities.
Okay.
The most significant discussion item is, if you look on page 2 of the agreement, your city staff is recommending that the utilities, the developer connect to city water and sewer within 12 months of the city's approval of this document.
Okay.
The city engineer can describe kind of what the process would be to do a feasibility study and make sure that those improvements are there so they can connect to them. But essentially, that's our recommendation for any number of reasons. We can discuss the rationale for that, but Mr. Peterson's here. He's, I would say he's generally agreeable with the concept. I know he wants to see what the numbers look like. So we would continue to refine the numbers and incorporate that. If you approve this agreement, the final form will include all of the connection charges, all of the proposed assessments. But generally, as a concept, he and his council indicated acceptance with that.
And that would be perfect because that'll provide the water, fire protection, everything?
Water, fire protection, there had been, I think, some failing septic systems on that site. It would, a dress.
Sure.
Those systems would be removed as part of the development. The development would hook to public utilities immediately.
And that works out our grand plan for looping the systems and kind of...
Yeah, for looping the water system, there would be an easement through the property that would provide the easement corridor, but the water loop would, would be at a later date if it's required to connect across the freeway.
Right.
This would then be a 2018 project.
Okay. Perfect. All right, anyone want to make a motion to approve or deny this agreement?
I'll make a motion to approve the development agreement.
Okay.
Second.
All right, any other discussions?
I got a question. What if it takes a little bit longer to get this done across there and then they build their facility? What are they going to do for sewer and water? If it's not available... If it's not available to them when they'd have their plant, then they, if something happens or it's a little bit behind, I mean, they gotta have this stuff to work and be open and operating.
I think from what I know, but, correct me if I'm wrong, by the time they get their equipment and they order the plant and do everything, it's gonna be about that long, yeah, so I don't think that's a problem.
We know where it's going.
The city engineer was not concerned when we met as a staff that we couldn't get that done in this timeframe, given that we're still early in the year, but Dennis, I don't know if you want to address that question?
No, if, if we approve the development agreement, probably come back very soon about authorizing a feasibility study or could do that now.
I think, yeah, I think that would be a good, uh, second motion, we don't have it on the agenda, but a second motion would be to.
Sure.
To direct.
If it passes, we'll look at that, yeah. Okay. All right, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
May.
Ayes have it. So to that point, since it passed, we'll talk about that feasibility study? So what would the motion curtail, Dennis?
Extending, uh, city sewer and water from existing terminus on West freeway drive under 35 down to the west southerly entrance.
The motion would be to do the feasibility study. Someone want to make a motion to do a feasibility study to extend the sewer and water?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, I don't know, I think Mark got that.
Mark got it, okay.
I think so. Who do you got, Jessica?
Yeah.
All right, any other discussions on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
May.
Ayes have it again. Okay, uh, anything else?
The last item is the animal control contract, as you know, we had to switch providers. Uh, the one that's in the main agenda packet, uh, was marked up a bit, um, not significantly, but essentially provides the substantive terms for providing that contract, so you've got, you've got a version in the handouts that's just been a little more refined because our office took a look at it and made some suggested changes.
Okay, that's on A14?
Yes. It's, uh, yeah, A15 through 19.
Oh, oh yeah. Okay, I, I was impressed with the gentleman, so what do you guys think?
So you go for it.
Someone want to make a?
Questions on it.
Okay, go ahead.
On the handout or in the?
Well, you probably want to work from the.
A4.
Handout, A15.
A15? All right, hold on a second here. Okay, so they, they hold the animals five days, is that, is that, and they charge the city $20 a day if, if he's not picked up, the animal's not picked up, is that correct?
My understanding is the five days, that's what stat, state statute requires you to hold it five days.
Okay, and charge the city if he's not picked up by the owner?
That is the current practice, yes, or the proposed practice, yes.
How much do we have in our budget for that? We have something in there for animal.
I don't think we, I don't think we budget, we don't, we don't budget for it, I don't think there is a budget, a line item budget.
So we probably should, a little bit, I don't know, what did we spend last year?
I'd have to look at it.
Okay, it's not a lot.
It's really not a lot, it doesn't happen very often, but it, on occasion.
It's less than a thousand dollars.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I was gonna ask about the, uh, veterinarian, I'm checking the two different ones here, veterinarian expenses, so if the owner doesn't pick them up, the, the city's on hook for all veterinarian expenses, I mean, they could have a dog hit by a car and, and a lot of surgery and city's gonna be paying a thousand or two for that, do you think?
Don't you think they'd put him to sleep at that point?
Well, would they, I don't know. I don't know if they would or not. I suppose.
It says.
Neological, whatever.
Well.
It says non-emergency must be.
Non-emergency.
Must be approved by the city administrator in writing.
Kind of.
Question is, is what about emergency? Oh, it says here, emergency vet, veterinary care shall not exceed $100 without notice. See that, uh, that's item number four.
Item four, last, tell you, Bill.
Somebody must have.
Jake did.
Yeah.
Oh, good, Jake caught it before you did.
No, he didn't. All right.
Okay, yeah, that's a, that's a good thing, you, we don't want them.
No, we don't want them.
Spending $2,000 on a dog that gets, puts us.
Anything else?
Much as I love dogs.
Yeah.
All right, I entertain a motion to approve or deny this, uh, agreement?
Make a motion to approve the animal impound facility agreement.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion?
No.
You want to get one, and you're gonna get one.
We'll let, we'll let him get the next one.
Okay, just slow down then. All right, further discussion on, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Ayes have it. Okay, anything else?
No.
That's it for you?
Not until, uh.
Yep. Okay, council meeting, uh, council reports, Danny?
I have a, a meeting tomorrow for the sunrise and I'm not gonna be able to make it, I'm hoping somebody could fill in for me.
Okay, who's that, who's your backup?
Tomorrow evening.
I'm busy.
You're the backup?
No.
We don't have a backup for sunrise.
We don't have a backup, Mark can do it. I know I can't.
Okay, well, if you, I, I have to miss it, if you can't find us back in, we just, we just won't go, somebody won't be there. It's been all last year we didn't go, so one more day, one.
I guess that'll work.
I'm gonna try my darndest to make it the next time.
You want to go, Jeff?
No, I don't. No.
Okay, anything else?
No, that's all I have.
Okay, Bill?
No, I've got nothing.
Nothing, Mark?
Um, let's see, we had a, uh, park board meeting in January, uh, nothing's really changed there except, uh, they're talking about possibly increasing the fees for the ball fields because they've been.
Oh.
Pretty flat for many years and there's such a high demand for the fields, so they're doing a study to see what the other areas are at, but that may potentially increase, that'd be for next year though, not this year.
Oh, not this year, okay.
There's a high demand for them, I mean.
Oh, yeah, and they're good fields.
Yeah. So, that's it.
Okay.
Nothing.
Cable commission?
No.
Not in the report?
Didn't have one.
Oh. No. Okay.
Was it, no, our last meeting, I had one.
We, uh, we all met with the city, that was a good meeting I thought we had, about the new, potential new interchange. Otherwise, I, I don't have anything, public works report, anything? Okay, public information coordinator report?
Nothing.
Nothing? City administrator report?
In your packets, um, you had a personnel committee report, A20 is a, is an updated report. The first item on, on our report is there are two employees that are eligible for step increases for the month of March, and the recommendation is, the recommendation by the city administrator based on performance is that Jim Winnings, that our public works superintendent, and Larry Lemieux, who's our deputy clerk, um, we recommend that they have, they get step increases as indicated.
Okay, you want to take these separately? Probably should.
Yes, I think so.
Okay, so let's discuss that.
You know, what I would like to see is, uh, five or seven year back, going back in what the raises were and step increases and all that, because when we see this, there's, there's no, there's no history on it, so I just, it's hard for me to vote on some, I don't know what the history is. If they're up for a step increase, I suppose they're up for a step increase, so.
What makes them eligible?
The step increase are, are, we have a seven steps and, uh, based on performance each year, if you, if you perform well, you're up for a step increase.
Okay. Each year?
Each year.
Okay. Okay.
So I think, you know, to answer your question, Jeff, you would go back, you know, I mean, if, if Jim is on step five, that means, you know, I mean, he, he received five step increases, now whether that was over five years or whether it was over, you know, I mean.
How long has he lived here?
I think he started on step three, I think, or something like that, three or four, three.
I don't remember. What changed when his position changed too?
Oh, he got a raise for that and then the step increase, higher, just coming on step two or three, I don't know which.
Well, I mean, the step system is what it is.
Yep.
It's how we work here, so.
I see that.
Any other question?
No.
Okay. Anyone else? Someone want to make a motion to, uh, approve these recommendations from the city administrator on these two step increases?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Ayes have it. Okay, next.
So, we have, uh, currently we had three positions open, we had an accountant position, administrative technician position, and a planning commission secretary, um, position. We placed ads for all three, we got, um, we received six applications for the accountant and we interviewed three. In this particular case, city staff and personnel committee interviewed them all at once instead of doing it in two different sessions. At this time, the personnel committee recommends that the city offer the accountant position at 24 hours to William Warner at an hourly rate of 23.67 per hour. This position does not include medical or, or sick time benefits, but he is, but it is eligible for, for benefits on a prorated basis, with the understanding that he would be eligible for a step increase, um, after six months based on performance. And Mr. Warner is in the audience tonight.
Okay. Welcome.
I was wondering why you're here. There it is.
He's watching you.
There he is.
All right, anyone have any questions? The interview process went well and it was a tough choice, but we had to choose, so. Questions?
I'm glad for having somebody fill a position.
Okay, all right, I entertain a motion to approve this, uh, what are we gonna say here, we're gonna approve the personnel committee recommendation, how's that?
Who is the person, you saw on the personnel committee?
Bill and I now.
Yes.
I gotta do something here, otherwise I don't do anything.
I know, I thought we stopped there. Motion to approve the, uh, personnel recommendation for an accountant, Bill Warner?
Do you have a second? All right, second, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Welcome aboard.
The second motion to that accountant position is to approve the 2018 pay scale as amended.
Okay, someone want to make a motion to approve that pay scale?
So moved.
Second.
Thanks, Bill.
We've been waiting, haven't we?
I know, he's slow on the draw today.
I quit. I didn't have a choice.
All right, any other discussion?
So this pay scale here we're raising and the bottom here?
No, it's a new pay scale.
Then the, the revised pay scale will be the new, the new pay scale, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Why, why is it, I mean, why is it revised? Why wouldn't, if you want them to start at that price here, why don't you start them at step two, why revise in the pay scale? You're raising it all.
When I looked at the market and when I looked at what, what was posted, um, we were, 2272 is on the very low end for an accountant, and so I, I adjusted it for a
Okay. Okay, uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Ayes have it.
Earlier this week, city staff held some interviews, um, and those interviews were for the administrative technician position and also for the planning commission secretary. We did, we held those interviews on Monday and the city staff recommendation and motion for the planning commission secretary, that's 24 hours a month generally, is that we hire Rochelle Bush, subject to a favorable reference check at an hourly rate of $17.62 per hour. And this particular position does not include any benefits with the exception of.
Okay.
Rochelle is a Columbus resident.
Glad, um, glad we found somebody. I recommend we take the recommendation, but do you guys want to make a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
All right, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
The last position that we interviewed for was the administrative technician position, and this is a position that's gonna help out the building department and administrative department, um, during a few workdays, up to 15 hours. We did some interview, uh, interviewing and it is our recommendation that we offer that position to Jeff St. Martin, subject to a favorable reference check at an hourly rate of $17.62, including prorate eligible benefits. In this particular case, um, would not be eligible for medical or sick time benefits, but would be eligible for holiday if it landed on a day of regular work and/or vacation, with the understanding that he would be eligible for a step increase in six months based on performance.
So, I mean, I, I don't know if I asked this before, but because he's gonna be working for the building, uh, inspector, those funds should come out of the building fund then?
They will go, the wages will be allocated to the building department.
But I thought he's gonna be doing scanning and other things too.
He will, so half his, half his wages will be allocated to the building department and half his wages will be el, or allocated to the admin.
Okay.
And that's why the building department under FTE, it says 1.125, that 125 will be allocated to the building department.
So.
The 1.0 is Leon.
So, I mean, last fall, obviously, the staff was inundated with lots of extra paperwork. Will this, this will help, will this help expedite building permits, because that was one of the things last fall that there was lots of concern about, we weren't getting our stuff out quick enough.
Correct, so, um, I had a, a discussion with Jesse and we, we brainstormed a little bit yesterday and we have a job description, it is, uh, my intent, because right now, um, there are several things that are under my, on my plate, let's just say. And one of the things is the zoning for building permits, and it is my intention that Jesse will put a checklist together that, that I go through in my mind, but I don't necessarily have it written down. We're gonna write it down and we're gonna delegate it to, I'm gonna delegate it to Jeff, because I think that if he can go through the checklist, review all the building permits first, you know what I mean, I can just scan over it and then hand it to Leon, I don't have to pull out all the books and look at everything in detail as long as we have a checklist.
Well, I mean, I know Leon's a very detailed guy, so I mean, will this help speed that up, his portion of it at all?
Well, the zoning, the zoning portion will be, will be a lot quicker, which I think, I actually think I was the lag in the system, um, in, in reviewing it for zoning. And in this particular case, um, Jeff will also be able to do, answer phone calls and schedule inspections. What happens with Leon is he's, you know, he has his day scheduled, he's out on inspections, people are calling, people are calling for next day's inspections, but he's not here. So by the time he gets back, he's looking at all those phone calls, meanwhile, he has to do plan review. So, it, it's one of those things where I think if we have someone who's answering the phone, doing scheduling inspections, that will help him and give him more time for plan review. Cause plan review is the one that, we do inspections first, you know, and then we answer the phone, then we do plan review. So.
Cause I think he's gonna be a busy guy this year.
He's gonna, we're, we're starting to get busy, so it is our intention that we're hoping that Jeff will be able to streamline the process.
Why does he take, he takes calls during the day? I mean, I know when I call for an electrical inspection, it's 8:30 and you're done and you gotta wait till tomorrow. I mean.
I think they call all day for inspections.
You ever been able to talk to an inspector during the day?
No.
No.
They talk to me during the night, and I read everyone's calendar and schedule for him.
Yeah. Okay.
So, the staff recommendation to hire Jeff St. Martin stands simply.
Okay, so, someone wanna make a motion to take the recommendation from the staff?
It's moved.
Okay. Another second from Bill. Okay, any other discussion on that?
Um, what if they, you get really busy and need a little bit more hours from them?
Uh, he is open, he is open to more hours.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Nay.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Mayor, did you wanna do your appointment?
Yeah, um, so, yeah, there is two things here. Let me do this one first. So, back to the 180th, 170th Street debacle that we really need to put some pros and cons together for which one our city is gonna wanna go for? And, and I think then we need a resolution coming back? Is that what I remember hearing?
From us, or I thought you guys were gonna meet with the other cities first?
Yeah, but you guys need to get, give us some of your pros and cons. Maybe we could get some from the city staff. I don't know, JW, if you know about that? I can go over that later with you, but there, I have a map here, I'll show you, but. So, I, I think if, we're gonna have a meeting and set up a meeting, but if, you know, probably wanna get, I wanna represent what you guys feel is the right thing, the right way to go.
You know, our, most of our concerns was is that County Road 54 is tied into that.
Right.
I mean, they first were gonna go over the top of it and that's.
Made no sense, right?
Made no sense. We need to have access south. I mean, if that doesn't go through and the 170th was to go through instead, then we would have to try and get on-ramps and off-ramps off of West Freeway Drive.
Right.
For our own, you know.
Yeah.
Cause otherwise, it's, why would we even, why would we even get involved in this? County Road 54 has some access south, so.
Okay, so, if anybody has any pros and cons, get them to me.
I, I drove the area this morning, and 180th, I can't see any benefit, very little benefit to Columbus for that.
170th, you mean?
180th.
Oh, why?
It just, there's no road, we got no road connected to it, we have to put a road in.
No, it's gonna connect over to 54.
No, I'm talking, it won't, from 100, from 180th to the freeway, there's no road.
180th. The, Forest Lake is gonna, it's in Forest Lake.
It's in Columbus.
No, Danny's right, there is no.
No road there.
From Lion Street to the highway and the highway over to 54. Where.
Well, there is no road, yeah, we don't have a road there, but the, the whole thing is a new interchange. And that, that's the, the beauty of doing it is that we're not buying acquisition, high vol, high value property, buildings. Put it where there is no road, so it's cheaper, I think is the theory.
I agree, I think the other one is 100, it's Fourth Avenue.
170th.
170, I'm in favor of that there.
The 7, 170th?
Yes.
Okay.
So, then we would need some, we would need to somehow get some on an off-ramp.
You're not gonna get across the swamp to connect to 35W.
That's never.
You, you get to 54.
That's right, that's the thing.
You get to 54.
You get to 54 and that's it.
Yeah.
But we still won't have the southbound situation taken care of with off 54 to go south on 35W.
If 180 went through, we would've dumped to on, on the, jumped in the triangle, wouldn't it?
Right below the asphalt plant.
Right below, below that?
It'd go right on the edge of the asphalt plant.
Okay, you sure?
Exactly, I know for sure, yes.
That's why they had that flyover on the bridge going down and coming off.
Yeah, I, I, it was green last night, it was new to me and I, I haven't had a chance to really study it yet, so.
I'll, I'll go down there if you want to, cause I, I think, at first, when Ben talked about it, it sounded a little far-fetched. But I think, the more I think about it and, and the pros that Ryan came up with, made a lot of sense. I mean, he, the fact that there's nothing there, it's easier to develop.
Yeah.
170th would be the backup to that bridge like Howard Lake is, or what we call Howard Lake, but, so.
Well, the part where I walked in.
Yeah.
Is where they were talking about they're out of commercial property.
They are, right.
So, they wanna develop, have some more commercial property on the south end of town, which that would open that up, plus more housing.
So, he, they're talking that could be a new Broadway, you know, a new large, right?
It was, it was Forest Lake, benefit to Forest Lake five times or 10 times over to Columbus, I can't see that much.
Uh, it's benefit to us because our whole south end of the freeway district would have access, that's huge benefit.
I can see it'd benefit to get the south end of the freeway district across both sides.
It's not just a little thing, that's a big thing.
I know it, yeah.
Especially the truck traffic for future.
Yeah, that would get all that truck traffic off there, it would, um.
This is just a, a, put forth, the aster, effort to put it in the comp plans.
Oh, no, I think it's more than that. I think it's to get the comp plans in, in alignment as well as get a actual plan done so that we can present it to the, the.
Only in the DOT.
Well, the DOT, the.
Well, you need a feasibility study before you can present it to them.
Yeah.
I would like to see what the other two cities have in, what they, they think about it.
Yeah. Well, we'll find that out and then.
That's a good idea.
We'll go from there.
Well, the feasibility study isn't it just doing support for the project?
Nah, it actually is technical, right? Dennis, it's got road, it's got count, cart counts and.
You have to go formal feasibility study, you have costs and.
So, what do you?
I know the feasibility study, but the, the resolution for support is different though. It's just the city's supporting the project.
Yeah.
So, we don't need the, just conceptual plan. We just have to have the, the support before we go ahead with the feasibility study.
And, and whether you pick 180th or 170th, it's, it really doesn't matter. We, we need to just be united, I agree.
Yeah.
You know, even, I mean, you gotta say 180th, 1, 180th or nothing, you'd pick 180th?
Say what?
If you could pick 180th or nothing.
170th.
No, my point is if you could pick, for Dennis, he doesn't really want 180th, so I'm saying the negative for him.
He'd rather have County Road 4 over the 180, but if we can't get it, 180 would suffice.
Yeah, okay, that's exactly what I thought you'd say.
And that might be the easy route to go. Unfortunately, we still need our access to 35W, on and off.
Right, and the closer, with the 180th, it's closer to that 54 on and off access. And Ryan had a really good idea, Dennis, about hooking in with the, right directly to the property, the city line. City lower limit there. Okay, so, we'll, we'll go with that. And then, the next thing that I have here is the appointment for the EDA. This John's application, I didn't see it in here.
It's, the application isn't in there, but certainly if anybody wants a copy, I mean, we have copy. John Roush's application, he applied, this is the second time he's applied for the, for the EDA.
I was just going through my records and I found his first one, so. Yeah, I would, I would recommend that we appoint him, so.
The next meeting is in April, so that's why I was trying to get people, if we have a pool of people to get.
Yeah.
Right now, we have five, we have two vacancies.
Two open seats, yeah. So, I mean, my recommendations would go with them, but I have two other people to get a hold of, so.
So, you wanna make that appointment tonight, or you wanna?
I mean.
You can.
We can do it tonight, or we can do it.
You wanna make the appointment, and then if other council members, I can put it in, in the next packet. I know you're not gonna be here, but I can put it in the next packet if they wanna see the, the application.
Yeah, you guys, you wanna see the application first, or?
I mean, I'm good with it, we still got one more spot to do, so.
Right, I had to make that appointment.
He's applied twice, so.
Yeah. What do you guys think?
I should bring them aboard.
So, you need a motion to?
Then I'll, I'll make the appointment.
You make the appointment and then ratify.
So, then I'd accept the motion to ratify my appointment. Anyone wanna? Ratify it. Ratify my appointment.
Motion to ratify your appointment.
Second.
Okay. It's gonna, you're gonna get these right, it's gonna go Bill, Danny, Danny, Bill, Bill, Danny, Danny, Bill. You got it? Okay, any other discussion?
Uh, how come he didn't, if we had one vacancy for a long time, when did he apply last year?
Four or five years ago. It was a long time ago. It had a really old date on it, so. Okay, hearing nothing else, uh, call for a vote.
Aye.
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 Aye, so, that'll work. Okay, and then I'll bring another appointment to you in a month or so.
Is Casey still on it, or?
No. She resigned. Didn't she resign though? She had, sent a letter of not.
Right, her term, her term expired, and then she sent a letter that she wanted to be reappointed, but then she rescinded her.
That's right. I knew there was something there. All right, I don't think we have anything. You wanna do your, so you did your treasury report?
I have nothing to report.
Okay, good, now I can check that one off. All right, so, I guess, no, let's continue on with Dean then, now that Dean's here. And we'll go back to Garth, if you wanna come back up, talk about the, the comp plan questions. And I think the big, one of the big things that was of interest was diverse, just diversified rural and rural residential. And the diverse, tell me if I got this right, the rural residential is what we have now, and we're at a 1 in 10, which averages out with Carlos Avery and all the swamps to 1 in 5. So, anytime we wanna do anything other than that, we have to go to the comp plan to amend for that, each individual instance today. Otherwise, we go to this new designation, and then we would have at our disposal the wand, magic wand, to change that density willy-dilly. Is that correct?
If I may, I'll try to clarify the sequence of events. It was probably two years ago that Elizabeth and I met with our sector representative and the planning manager from the Metropolitan Council. And at that time, talked about if there was to be any flexibility that the city wished to pursue beyond the current five acre lot size or maximum density that we currently have in the community. We were discussing changing our designation from diversified rural to rural residential. We were pursuing that course and had discussed that with the Planning Commission, that with the update of the comprehensive plan, arguments would be made by the community about the uniqueness. Part of that is we're at the end of the system for metropolitan sewer. We're bounded on the north and the west by major portions of land owned by the DNR. And 2/3 of our community is in wetland, which makes it extremely expensive to put public sewer and water, even if we attempted to provide that throughout the community. And so, part of that argument was that the city ought to have some flexibility to initiate a potential future change in that density. We weren't making the argument about what that density was per se in the comprehensive plan, but that you would not be able to change your five acre standard without making that case in the comprehensive plan. In December, we were informed by the planning manager at the Metropolitan Council that a policy decision was made by the entire council that they were not going to allow any extension of that rural residential designation. They're going to treat them all as legal non-conforming areas, but not expanded. However, they made it clear that a community that was designated diversified rural could make the same argument that this description of rural residential always had, which was, you more or less established your own lot size. As the mayor mentioned, our previous comprehensive plan noted how we were consistent with the Metropolitan Council's one home per 10 acre density standard by averaging all of the wetlands in the community and simply saying it, it really comes out to our five acre minimum lot size. They accepted that. They noted some challenges to the logic and wisdom that we put in the plan, but what is different is that they will not hold any particular community that chooses to make arguments why they should have a different density from 1 to 10 within that rural diversified area. So, we had our comprehensive plan open house a week ago, couple of weeks ago, on the 15th. And we had 30 people turn in a comment form. One of those questions was, do you favor a change in the five acre standard? And there were seven that said they did. Would like to see some higher density in 20 that didn't. This is my third comprehensive plan with the city of Columbus, and this has been an issue at every one of these junctures. My point was not to abandon the direction the Planning Commission has had for us to pursue. It is just the realization in some private conversation with all of you that you're not all in favor of this. And this is a significant effort on our behalf to go through this and make it a component of the comprehensive plan. And as my memo stated to you, it takes four votes. It's a super majority to adopt a comprehensive plan. So, if there are two of you that aren't in favor of it, I'd rather know that today than go through a public hearing, perhaps anger people that are not in favor of that change, and then have you say, well, we don't want that anyway. So, I'm looking for any informal direction that you have at this time that says you think it's a good idea that we make these arguments, but that we don't determine what that density change is in the comprehensive plan, but we establish that option.
So, diversified would make the designation, we could go to 2 and 1/2.
Whatever that particular standard is, within the current designation the Metropolitan Council has assigned to us, we'd simply make that same argument as if we were going to request a change to their other designation, rural residential, which they said, we're not gonna allow. So, go ahead and do it in this. The issue is, if you make no change, you could not consider a different density or lot size without doing a comprehensive plan amendment. And I think the direction of the Planning Commission is by establishing this argument in the document itself, it gives you that right to do it, but that becomes a whole new process after the plan is adopted, including text amendments and other things before you could make that change. But if you decide not to do that, then the debate is moot unless you decide to amend the comprehensive plan and make that argument.
So, so Dean, so get, there was an interesting conversation we had at Forest Lake last night. So, that track that's up against Forest Lake that we talked about, did they talk about, was it, how many homes? It wasn't a couple hundred, was it?
Yeah, it was two couple hundred.
You mean, within the city, if there were sewer available?
But up against, yeah, that sewer, we found out last night, does not have to come across the highway. It's already stubbed in at the end of one of their developments, already on this side, it would have to go through. It already could go through one of the neighbors' properties in Forest Lake, but they, at this time, the guy was not interested letting them cross. It doesn't mean it can't change. But, so, if we do, if we do the diversified, we could actually bring those lot, we could do those lots, right? Hooked up the sewer and water?
I guess the better, I, you know what you're saying, Bill. The question is, if, if we go to diversified rural, how do we protect the greater Columbus for density change? Cause if we, if we choose that option, any council in the near future can just go with a simple motion, change it to 2 and 1/2, and the whole city changes. And my concern is that the city, all the rules, all the laws, all the reasons people moved out here was about the five acres. And if you switch to 2 and 1/2, or 2, or 1, or whatever they happen to choose under that designation, it's gonna affect, snowball effect. All our, our laws about dogs and fences and front yards and backyards and lots, road frontage, I mean, it's a huge thing. So.
It's huge.
I would like to see properties that are able to be developed on the sewer system, properties that are gonna benefit, you know, in those higher density areas to, to be allowed, but not necessarily the greater, the greater Columbus.
And that, and that raises a completely different issue. The sewer proposition is not a component of diversified rural. That is a whole different designation. And so, it would be requesting that another part of the community where such urban services were available be designated the same as the freeway corridor. Has nothing to do with diversified rural. So, if your position is, we don't wanna change our current rural residential, with the exception of one or two areas that might have sewer extensions, that's a different procedure. To do that in this current comprehensive plan, and using the example on Broadway and, and services through Forest Lake, we'd have to have an inter-community service agreement, and the feasibility studies would need to be completed. The last time that we met with the city engineer, they indicated that there was not enough capacity in their existing trunk sewer system to serve all of.
It needed an upgrade, yeah.
Pardon?
It needed an upgrade.
Right. And that included a section of sewer that would have to go under the freeway. They would have to increase the sewer pipe under 35 to serve that northwest corner. So, the fact that there's existing capacity, it, it's one property away from Columbus, doesn't overcome the issue that if they gave that capacity to Columbus, well, they shot themselves in the foot because.
It was an upgrade in the future, it wasn't necessarily something they needed to do right away, because they're not using their full capacity. It's, if they filled out their capacity, then it would have to be.
And, and then, then the issue is, if I'm in Forest Lake's position, I'd wanna be certain before I granted that option, that you agreed to participate at what cost?
Yeah.
All of that feasibility information is not done. We literally have three, four months to complete our comp plan. If that, if that type of project on that particular, it was really one property that came up for interest.
Big property though.
That would be a separate comprehensive plan amendment at some point in the future, if and when it happens.
What you're saying is we state status quo, except that their city sewer hookup water is a totally different deal.
It, it becomes a different, we have to amend, Dennis does a, what's called a tier one and a tier two study for all of our sewer districts. Tier one is the establishment of the district, tier two breaks down into sub-districts and, and sewer flows and other things. We haven't, we haven't got any of that preparation. We're, we're six months to a year out. If a developer came and put an application on the table and said, we wanna do it, and Forest Lake said, we're. Forest Lake said, we're, we're happy to help. So we didn't pursue that option because the developers never come and talk to us again once they found out what some of these costs were. Doesn't mean they've disappeared, but they don't have a proposal in front of us. Elizabeth and I also met with the city of Lino Lakes in a similar fashion, saying, is there any opportunity, not to open up great areas of Columbus, but is there an opportunity on Lake Drive coming up from Main Street in, in Lino to provide at least sewer and water to the, the business corridor? At that time, they said a similar response that Forest Lake did. We've got a whole series of our own trunk lines between our metropolitan interceptor and this, and none of them have that capacity to serve you. The option was, there was no new undeveloped area where it would be easy to say, oh, let's put the big pipe in here and then we can share that with you. We'd be coming back through existing development areas, tearing up streets and replacing sewer pipes to have capacity for that. We did not pursue that option.
Dean, just check me if I'm going in the wrong direction here, but to address the mayor's question, couldn't, if it, if it benefits the community, and that's the council's decision, to go to diversified rural, in part because rural residential is now kind of a non-conforming category, couldn't you, if the council so desires, have a series of policy considerations within this amendment that says kind of when and if, gives guidance to future councils, when and if you would go to increased density not on a sewer system? In other words, it doesn't completely tie a future council's hands, but it says to the community, this is how we would consider this question.
And there are many options. It is taking your existing five acre and say, anybody that's got five acres now can split it into two, two and a half acres. It can be, we're not going to allow that option, except in a handful of remaining undeveloped areas. There are a lot of policy directions to do it. And any of those can be put in the comprehensive plan, which do tend to tie your hands, if you will. The less you say in the comprehensive plan, other than, we don't want to be considered one per 10. We've been one per five since 1959, and now we're considering something greater than that, a higher density, that'll be resolved through zoning amendments. Your concern is, that's carte blanche, takes three votes, anybody can do whatever they want.
Right.
If you want more serious discussion, we either have that and put the caveats that Bill is suggesting in the comprehensive plan itself, and we have to follow that guide.
So I guess that poses a question to the council right now. I mean, does the council think that two and a half acres across Columbus is a good idea?
So I, I'll comment on that, right off the bat. So we listen to the people, the 21 people and the seven people. That's okay. I understand them wanting to keep their piece of heaven or whatever the way it is. However, we've got landowners and we've got massive wetland issues to deal with. I don't think it would be that many houses, even if it went to two and a half acres, would be an issue. We've got neighborhoods right over here where they're on one-acre lots, and they have these big parties, and they love being in their neighborhood in Columbus. They're tight neighborhoods. Whether that makes any difference or not, I'm just saying, I don't, if we went to diversified, I don't think we're going to end up with that many houses. And the property owner, the developer, where does their rights end to develop their property and utilize it to the max? You know what I'm saying? So I don't think there's, I won't think there's that many lots. I mean, we said 500 at one time. I bet it ain't 300 or 400 by the time you're done with all the wetland stuff.
But I think-
But Bill, my, my point is, and I've done a lot of thinking about this in the past few months, is, yeah, the new developments, maybe I wouldn't care so much, but you're opening Pandora's box. Everybody's got five acres.
I was just going to say that.
Now you have two and a half acres, you have common driveways, it's just going to flood the city with-
You got, you got our pencil lots. So everybody with a five-acre pencil lot is going to cut the back two and a half off?
Well, I just don't want, and when I was campaigning, I bet there was 80% of people said, first question, do you favor five-acre lots? Well, and I, and I understand that, so I just looked at my neighborhood, just to drive through to see where the wetlands are, where, first of all, I'm on 10, we're on 10 acres. We'd never be able to subdivide unless you put the driveway. I had that argument at a tax meeting where they said, you guys can put another lot in there, where they'd have to go right down in front of our house. It's wetlands on one side, wetlands on the other side, you know, it would never work.
Did you fill all those wetlands? Just kidding.
But anyways, I'm just saying, there's probably one lot on our road where they could actually do it, and there's a wetland area, they'd have to cut the road through to get to it. It's small, maybe the size of this room, so that might even, not even be able to get done. So, I don't know. I, I mean, I'm on a fence.
We, we changed the rule so that we can have two and a half acre lots, so long as the average is, is five. And that allows people to put these little cul-de-sacs, put a row of nice houses around it. And it's happened how many times in our city so far?
We've got two proposals now, under that.
Yeah. And, and it looks nice. I mean, well, actually, the turkey farm, Thernbeck thing has got a lot of that in there, right?
Yeah, he'd like to go down to two and a half for sure, if he could.
Throughout, but yeah.
Right. So for that sole reason, I'm not going to support two and a half acre lots.
Throughout.
Throughout. And I'm not going, I don't want to make it for future, next council, a couple guys come up and change it all over either.
Okay.
I want to keep it status quo, as we have it right now.
Jeff?
It's a big decision, but I think that's best for the city right now and the people. That's what the people are going to want.
Jeff, what do you, how do you weigh in?
I agree with Mark. I think parts with sewer and water can handle more housing, but I think-
So that's three. Bill, or Bill, what's your name?
Two and a half, two and a half acre, Dennis.
You've got two Dennises now, right? Can't go wrong, right?
I'm two and a half acre, you know that.
You are, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So we got one on the fence, one for two and a half, and three for, so I don't think you have your supermajority there. So that, that would hopefully lead you down the path, okay, what, what should be picked then to best fill the city in our comp plan?
I, I think what would help us, because I work in a vacuum if I'm not in a meeting with all of you when I'm with the Planning Commission, and I'm not saying that in any mean, or bad way. It's just, if their direction isn't going to happen, I don't want to invest a lot of time to go through the Metropolitan Council, make this argument, and it comes to you. I also don't want to go to a public hearing and have 50 people chase me away from a podium, which happened 20 years ago, if you're not going to support this.
Well, I think you got, you just got your answer.
You're not going to support this.
Right.
No. It's not going to happen, there's not-
So you- I'm going to, I'm going to just chime in here, because they can give you that direction tonight-
And change their mind.
And they can change their minds.
And, and that's, I understand that.
I'm not, I'm not saying they will.
Yeah.
I'm not saying, but, but one of the parts of this process is that you hear all the testimony, all the evidence. So this is direction, and just for the record, this is direction on this night, not to pursue the higher density, but-
It's not a decision.
It's not a decision because the public gets to weigh in and all sorts of things get to happen before a final-
But he asked the question, should he go down the path? And the answer is no, because tonight, we don't agree with it.
Exactly. And that's fine. That's good direction, and it probably saves the community a lot of heartache, but you may be, you may have 100 people show up on the night of the hearing and say, well, you heard from 37 people or 27 people, and now here's the other 130 people, you know? I'm just saying, the, the way that-
I'll bet you a steak dinner over that one.
You're probably right. I'm not trying to preserve any option, other than to say the legal process cannot be determined until there, until there's a public hearing.
Until it's done.
Yep, until it's done.
And that's fair, and I think-
Perfect decision from a lawyer.
If the majority of people said, why, why didn't you pursue the Planning Commission direction? Or if the Planning Commission insists that we do this, and I'm forced to lay out two alternatives and, and let you vote it up or down at that point in time.
So Garth, explain the process of why you guys recommended that.
I was doing the inventory maps. We calculated up high ground. One good thing about this, we'll never have to hear about rooftops again, because if we don't go this route, there's no need to talk about rooftops anymore.
Well, for the higher density areas, that'll add to our rooftops.
Well, that's, I'm going to get to that too, because I think, I think Dean's actual question was citywide. Nobody's talked about specific areas of 2.5, like the land you're talking about over by Forest Lake.
Right.
So that, you know, you guys have covered the citywide 2.5 acre deal, but not the specific zoned area that, you know?
And I, and I think, and I think, and I won't speak for you guys, but I think we have a consensus here that we would all support that. Is that correct? On a sewered system?
There's sewers.
Lots?
Yeah.
Some sort of covenants or some sort of minimum size or cost or something?
2.5 acres with city-
No, no, lots. I mean, houses right next to each other, all hooked up to sewer and water. I mean, they were-
Going back to Forest Lake, where the sewer is not there, it needs to be upgraded all the way under the freeway, and it may not ever happen.
It's there, Garth.
It will happen.
They said it doesn't need to be upgraded now, because they're not using it.
Right. They have 50%, say, they have 50% left, and we're using 10%. So-
This was a two-faceted deal. It was, you know, you could go citywide, two and a half acres, or you could take, that was one property that we talked about in specific, that maybe that particular chunk of land could be developed into 2.5 acre lots. Not, we never talked about city sewer connections or anything like that.
Or it might even be smaller than that.
Well-
With sewer, it could be, yeah.
But no, you could go down, you said about an acre and a half, right? With, with a well on Septic, I mean, theoretically, it's lower limit.
You can go to half an acre of upland under state rules.
Yeah, which is pretty small, so.
And again, nobody's promoted two and a half. That's just, that's just a number that's come out, like you double your density. So that, all of that becomes a, a policy issue. This could be a three acre, could be a three and a half. I think the point of the Planning Commission after our last meeting was, if we don't do this in this comp plan, at a future time that the council wishes to go into this direction, you just need to do a comp plan, that, an amendment. I mean, you don't wait another 10 years to make that decision. And it's the same with if sewer were to become available and you had an application for property adjacent to Forest Lake, that's another comp plan amendment. It's not extraordinary. It's a few thousand dollars. The sewered project will take a little longer, just because there's a lot more engineering that needs to be done with that. Otherwise, a, a change where you make an argument on the rural density standard is not that complicated. And if what you're saying is, you'd rather let a future council that wants to go through a both comp plan and zoning process to make that decision, that's fine. This is all your policy. I'm not driving any part of this, other than having a little sanity on how I finish the project.
Well, that takes care of Mark's concern, because you wouldn't redo the comp plan just to do a five acre split.
No, no, you, you wouldn't be doing any mapping or anything. You'd just be presenting those same arguments on why your community is different from the majority. And right now, several of your neighbors to the west are two and a half acre lot communities, and they have that rural residential designation. It's, it's not rocket science to me that you would probably win this argument, but if your heart's not in it, it's hard to justify going through this process. But I agree with Bill. I mean, I, I'm not looking for anything other than kind of a non-binding nod which way you're headed, because if it ain't going to happen, I don't want to put my heart in it.
I think you got it.
You got it. So was there any other concerns that you needed-
Nope.
-talked about?
And we will not be putting in that plan anything regarding Broadway and sewer at this time without an application, without somebody driving that decision. But again, if that came up even in six months, you can go and do that amendment easily.
So one of the things I remember from sitting out there 10 years ago was corner of Potomac and Broadway, the corner of Kettle River and Broadway, talking about some sort of zoning for gas station, retail, and that seemed to get a lot of pushback from the, from the residents? Is that something you thought about, considered at all? It's these other little pockets of-
I remember those meetings too. There was a lot of pushback, and it just, it was about as bad as the five, going from five to two and a half acres.
It seemed like it, like, yeah.
We, we talked about it over a year ago, earlier on in this process. Do you want to revisit that? We had a lot of neighborhood meetings. We, we had them expanding the Lake Drive commercial industrial area. We had them on Kettle River and, and Broadway, as you mentioned. And there wasn't any support. And the Planning Commission this time said, it, it doesn't seem like anything's changed where we'd bring that up again. So the major focus on this became kind of twofold. What changes in direction is potentially needed within the freeway corridor? And are you looking at any kind of a lot size or density adjustment in your rural area? And so right now, the remainder of the focus, I think, would be taking information that we got from our workshop on the freeway corridor and presenting some concepts to the Planning Commission and the council on that. We're assembling a draft document, but that will be a major component. What kind of planned use changes and decisions should be made within the freeway corridor? We'd want to have an informal meeting with the Planning Commission, invite the council to that. Based on that direction, let's say that's a month from now, or six weeks from now, we'd finish a document and have a public hearing.
Let me ask you this. Is there any spots in Columbus? I know there's been a whole lot of requests for more light industrial areas. Is there any residential areas, maybe along Pine Street or anywhere else throughout the city, that could potentially be upgraded to light industrial?
You know, our original search areas were based upon transportation network and support. Rarely does it work well in communities to take private roads, or not private, local roads, especially dual jurisdictional roads like Pine, and tried to turn it into a major development without direction from the other community. And so we did not pursue that on any of the other avenues.
I love Broadway.
Originally, we talked and looked at Broadway and-
Oh, by the, the Wolf Farm there, or whatever, is on the south side, there's some commercial style people there anyways now. I mean-
We did not carry that out. In part, you have a large vacant land inventory in both the freeway corridor and along Lake Drive, and we simply said, you can reevaluate that at the next time, rather than trying to perhaps change your focus of development in the two primary areas you currently have. We let it go at that.
I think the last time, the other area that we talked about is whether or not we were going to connect the two commercial areas. In other words, whether we were, because you have, you have-
Up through 23?
Right. You have 23 that's commercial, then you have 23 that's residential, then you have 23 that's commercial. And whether or not that corridor was going to be all commercial at some point.
A lot of houses in there.
And I think that was, that was the consensus, that there were-
There's, there's houses, there's quite a few of those people that would like to see the zoning go that way, but-
Oh, there are?
Yeah.
And there's a, there's a big chunk in there that's been given to the state of Minnesota too.
Yeah, you got some land trust areas that-
Well, you got the stinky piece, but I'm talking even from, from camp three down. I mean, there's, there's a lot of houses.
26.
But why wouldn't you consider doing Kettle River Boulevard and Broadway more so than anywhere else in Columbus?
That would make sense to me.
I mean, the great, the great, the greater Columbus, I remember that same argument about putting a QuickTrip or something in on Potomac and Broadway, and that didn't go over good at all.
No. They were, they were, shoot, that was pretty, pretty rough.
Yeah, so.
That was the same thing at Kettle River too. They wanted convenience zoning, and it would, it didn't go over very well. And a lot of the argument back then too, is we can't even move the land we have, so where are we looking at making more commercial property? So, which is a somewhat valid argument, I guess.
Well, once again, I think you got some landowners there that would like to see that go, but then the neighbors around are saying they don't want to see it.
That's everything.
They didn't move out here to be next to a convenience store with a bunch of riffraff going in and out.
And changing the-
Light fixtures.
You could pull them in there.
Yeah. Okay, so-
Thank you.
Thanks for all your input, but you didn't bring up going to 10 acres. How come?
Didn't I put that in here? You could go the other way.
Just kidding.
You could be totally consistent with Met Council and force everyone to develop at 10 acres. I suspect we'd get some people out of the woodwork on that one.
Bet you would. All right.
So you say with the rural residential, and we're just not, not conforming?
We're, we're going to write up that we're at five acres. We don't have to play games averaging wetlands. We're just five acres.
Yeah.
That's what we're going to say.
So we don't have a desert?
We're going to, we're going to mention that we've adapted plan unit development procedures that allow a lot averaging. It doesn't change that density.
That's our cul-de-sac rule? That's our cul-de-sac rule?
Pardon?
Are you going to put in there that we have the cul-de-sac, that we can have two and a half acre lots with so many feet on a cul-de-sac?
You know, that detail doesn't go into the comp plan.
Oh, it doesn't.
That's strictly zoning. But we, we will mention, we're using, we're not going to increase the density, but we're using other tools to develop the land more smartly.
Okay. No more pencil lots. Okay, thank you. All right. I think at this time, we've covered everything, and per Minnesota statute 13D.05, we have to conduct a close meeting, so at this time, we have to wave everybody goodbye.
I'd just like to say one thing before you leave. The vote I had with Jeff St. Martin, I didn't vote against Jeff St. Martin, I voted against additional staff. I thought, we haven't got enough staff here, we don't need additional. That's what I voted against.
Point, point taken.
Okay, thank you.